generation and phone. Okay, I want to do a bit of Bible study rather than what I used to do to teach you the skills and looking at twenty four verses thirteen, the one I just preached. The three things that you need to know, I kept emphasizing, which you can actually practice it every day. The first thing is called observation. Observation simply mean what does the text say? What is the text that you're reading? What does it say? What does the passage say? If you cannot determine what the text say accurately, then you will likely to wrongly interpret. Corella, if I write a letter to you, you didn't pay careful attention in observing what I say, then you like likely to misinterpret what I say. So observe, observation, looking at the text and ask a question, what does it says? That's the first thing, what does it says? Second thing, you have to do what you call interpretation. Interpretation mean what does it mean? If I say something, then you have to say what do, what does I I mean, what I say? That is called interpretation. I may say something, you have to interpret exactly what I mean. I may not mean what you think I mean. Corella? So like for example, earlier I I I told the story, I started for the first five to eight minutes. I could see some already a bit disturbed already. How many of you, you were a bit disturbed? In honesty, when I, when I was just preaching, you think, wow, the bone of Jesus. No, it's very normal. Were you disturbed? Yeah, I think it's good, but I succeeded in disturbing you and provoke you because why? From now on, you go and read the gospel, you pay attention. Somehow in your mind, you say, I want to be very certain that Jesus was resurrected. Corella, you were disturbed. But what I say, then you had to interpret. When I say the first part, I didn't finish the whole thing. You need to know the the context, you got to execute what I mean later. I I actually wanted to wait until the end. Tank told me say pastor should wait until the end, but I don't want to let you so shocked that you cannot listen to my sermon already. I don't want to do that. I was afraid that you like Father Lavelle, you quickly run out. Then you want to go and jump from the building. Oh, I I cannot be responsible for that. I don't want to do that. So, so the interpretation is that you have to listen what I said earlier and what I continue to say and later. So Bible same thing, the context. You have to read the context, how one passage connect to the other interpretation. And what does it mean? Why the biblical writer say and what does it mean to his audience? What is he trying to communicate to his audience? Like if I were to read the gospel of Luke, okay, if you have Bible, you you read the first few verses. Someone read the first few verses that the purpose of Paul, Luke writing the gospel to who? To Theophilus. What did he say to Theophilus? Okay, anyone quickly read? Just stand up and read loud. Luke chapter one. Okay, then to Luke chapter one, first few verses, the purpose of Luke writing. Verses one to four. Just wait.
Many have undertaken to draw up an account of the things that have been fulfilled among us just as they were handed down to us by those who from the first were eyewitnesses and servant of the word. Therefore, since I myself have carefully investigated everything from the beginning, it seems good also to me to write an orderly account for you, most excellent, trifles, so that you may know the certainty of the things you have been taught.
Okay, verses one to four. Luke explained why he investigate and write the things. He actually was writing to Theophilus. It seemed good also to me to write an orderly account. There are many people already reading, writing and talk about the account of the things that have been fulfilled. Now, the same thing, the word, the things that have been fulfilled occur in Luke chapter twenty three. The things that have been fulfilled refer obviously to the particularly to the suffering or the passion of Christ, to the crucifixion of Christ. You know, all the things that 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 people have been talking about. So, of course, here it also include resurrection and ascension. So Luke was wanting to now organize and 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 investigate, carefully investigated everything from the beginning. Luke is a doctor. He was a doctor. So he he know how to write things, you know, research thing that carefully concerning the thing concerning Jesus Christ, his life, his crucifixion, his resurrection. Then he compile it and and write the gospel so that Theophilus, we do know much about Theophilus, Acts also continue and and Luke wrote the second volume and also talk about told this to Theophilus so that you may know the certainty of the things you have been taught. Now, to me, this is most comforting. Theophilus already know, but not in full details. Now Luke is writing so that Theophilus will be very certain of the things that he has been taught so that his faith is grounded in that, not shaking, not so sure. You know, hey, this morning pastor say about the thing one, he say it's a movie. It's not the true thing one. It's someone who wrote a book based on the movie. And maybe it could be true, you know? So your faith is a bit shake shaken, you know? But Theophilus have also heard about the the resurrection of Jesus. So deep down, he say, hey, is it true? Where got people get resurrected? Did anybody talk about it? Is it true? So so Luke wrote so that Theophilus will be to know the certainties of the thing that you have been taught. That is the intention of Luke writing the gospel. Okay, there's number one. So when you see the beginning, then you interpret in that context is that what does it mean? Whenever all the story that that Luke investigated, compiled, we talk about the certainty of the crucifixion. Later, we're going to examine, we play the role to invest as an investigator to examine, did Jesus really die? Because the Muslims say, no, Jesus didn't die. Someone took his place. Let's examine that. Then there are people also say Jesus never resurrected. So you have to examine. So all these contexts is so that we firstly, Theophilus, Luke wrote so that he can be certain of the things of the things that he has been taught so that his faith is grounded in that and not not wavering. So that is called interpretation. You execute, you you know firstly, what he says? What does Luke say? Then we need to interpret in the light of the context that he wrote to Theophilus. Then the thing is application. Without application, what you study is just information, no use. In application, he said, what does it mean to me? If resurrection, if crucifixion does take place, then you need to ask, what is the purpose of Jesus crucifixion? Why did the Messiah need to die? Because disciple also beginning cannot accept. How can a Messiah suffer and die one? They were looking for conquering Messiah. Then there are some people say that he's a prophet only. He's a miracle worker only. So if you see Jesus as a miracle worker only, then when you are sick, you pray and Jesus never heal you. Then you say, no, I go and look for another God. That's how people look for another gods. You're not healed. You think everyone is healed? Then the worst thing is that when you're not healed, the miracle worker, I tell you, you got no faith. Then you you already suffered already, then worse still, they say you got no faith. Then you got second blow. So your faith is is not rightly interpreted. You you look at scripture, what does it say? So is Jesus only a prophet? Is he only a miracle worker? Or is he a suffering Messiah? If he's a suffering Messiah, as what Luke say, he died. And then later you examine, you say according to the scripture. Jesus himself explained that the son of man, I must die according to the scripture. What Moses say, what the prophets say, what the writings say. God really prophesized through the prophets, through the the writing all in the scripture. So Luke wanted Theophilus to be very certain, Jesus really died for him. That God has planned all this and you can found in the Old Testament scripture. Jesus said it, then only you begin to apply, apply to yourself. What does it mean, the the crucifixion of Christ to you? If Jesus really died for you, your sins are forgiven because Jesus also asked the apostles to go and preach the message of repentance. Then you say, have I really repented of my sin? If I have repented of my sin, then I've accepted Jesus as my savior, then my sins are forgiven. So why are we still living as if our sins are not forgiven? With guilt and shame and all this, many Christian are like that. So you don't understand the total sufficiency of the death of Christ. You don't understand that. So you base your justification on sanctification, meaning that you base on the acceptance of God. God accept you on what basis? On the basis of the finished work of Christ. You read Luke when Jesus died, he give out spirit, he say, it is finished. He didn't say, I am finished. He didn't say, I'm gone. Habes la saya, he didn't say that. He said, it is finished, tetel esti, Greek, mean it is accomplished. He came to do the work of salvation, redemption for us. So scripture got to keep giving us the picture in the passage of Micah, your sins are thrown into the depth of the ocean. You know how deep the ocean, the one that described in Micah? You know why it's the deepest ocean, the depth, those of us young people, geography? It's even taller, higher than the Mount Everest. You know how deep the ocean bait, the deepest part? Your Mount Everest put it down, it's still submerged Mount Everest. Can anyone go down or not? You will explode, the pressure will kill you. No submarine can go down to that depth. We got modern understanding. So scripture give us the understanding. No one can fish out your your shame, all your story, all the sin that you committed. But forgiven mean forgiven, you know, it take the God man to come and die for you and die for your sin to reconcile you to God. And of course, there are many, many, many description, your sin is as vast as from the west, as far as from the west to the east. West and east can meet, can never meet. So so the certainty of the crucifixion, which I'm going to look at, because I want you to be very, very firm. No boy, I keep teaching you the skill. I keep mentioning observation, interpretation, application. If you do not how to do Bible study leading to application, there is no use. So I want to ground your faith that the certainty of the crucifixion, living in an Islamic context, we need to be very clear from our scripture, from the historical point of view. Then secondly, I want you to be very certain about the resurrection of Jesus. Okay, these are two things. Okay, let's now turn to the passage, Luke Gospel. We are still looking at Luke Gospel. So when you read, you must remember that Luke wrote to Theophilus to ground his faith that he will be very certain of the things that happened. And he investigated, this is accurate and true, so that our faith is grounded in that. Okay, when did, when did Jesus tell the disciple that the son of man will suffer many distinct, will suffer under the hand of the elders? And not the elders, the chief priest and the elders. When did Jesus say? He said three times, three different occasion. You can use a chat G P T. I can tell you, chat G P T is good at quickly finding things on. Give me the list of the Bible verses that Jesus told the disciple in Luke Gospel that the son of man will suffer under the hand of the chief priest, chief priest. A I cannot go and bluff you on or give you a verses that you go and look nothing there one. A I is very good at that. But if you were to ask A I to interpret, you have to be careful already because his interpretation may not be accurate. Not yet, I think it's still quite good, A I can tell you. But checking information is very good. I can also tell you that women of you, you give chat G P T say, I got grouper fish and can you give me a recipe of a Chinese cooking? How to steam the grouper fish to make, you know, the Chinese food? You give a good recipe, then you go and cook and see whether A I is true or not. Okay, so can anyone tell me which are the verses in Luke Gospel? You see Bible study, when you want to find out information, where do you go? My time, when I first became a pastor, when I studied in Singapore Bible College, we are asked to buy a concordance. You know, concordance, we all have all the verse, the the listing in a in a concordance. If I want to check the word, say suffering of Christ, then then it give me all the verses in the Bible that deal with that. Then I go and read the Bible verses. But today you already got your Google. Use your phone now, your Google now, I let you do, you can do Google quickly. How do you find out? Either you use concordance or you go and read commentary or you look at your Bible that has all the references, we call it scriptural link, scripture link. One scripture link to another. Okay, tell me where it is. Anyone, I want to to see how you do your Bible study. But if you do not do that, then it simply means that you are not serious about Bible study. Now, when did Jesus ever tell the disciple? Because this is something we read when Jesus was talking to the disciples, the eleventh and as well as the kilopasa. Jesus explained the scripture to them, told them, why are you so so foolish and slow, hard to 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 know all these things? What the scripture say? Later, we're going to look at where did the scripture talk about his crucifixion? His suffering, his betrayer, his being flogged, and also about resurrection. You go and Google and chat G P T, you can never find a single verse that directly say in the Old Testament, Jesus will be resurrected, none. So where? Where can you find that? Someone on the third day, none. Then is Jesus telling a lie? No, that's what I want to show you. The pattern in the Old Testament that point to Jesus resurrection. Of course, Jonah talk about three days. But when you read Jonah's story like the Jews, how would they think that is referred to Messiah resurrection? They won't until Jesus explained and opened our mind, our eyes, then only you read the Old Testament, we begin to understand that. Okay, quickly, which are the places where in the Luke Gospel, of course, mark plenty, mark is very clear. But Luke, where is it that Jesus was telling the disciple about his crucifixion? About that he will suffer many things and be rejected by the elders and the priests and teachers of the law, and he must be killed and on the third day and he will be raised. Where? Okay, Luke nine twenty two, how did you find it from Google? Good, very good. So when you find from Google, you make sure quickly you check your Bible see whether it's true or not, okay? Or you can use chat G P T, use the technology to your advantage. Otherwise, you got to go and carry a big concordance and then flip, 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 oh, so heavy and then find the verse. Now, you youth, young people, you got your 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 hand phone. This is the best way to do research. Okay, nine twenty two, can you read? You found, you read, you read. Read out, read out the verse.
Luke nine twenty two. And he said, the son of man must suffer many things and be rejected by the elders, chief priests and teachers of the law, and he must be killed and on the third day be raised to life.
Okay, who say this? Who said this thing? Jesus, huh? Jesus, huh? Correct. If you are not not a trick question, I don't trick you all the time. But you have to read in a context when Jesus say this was upon Peter's confession. Up to some point in their discipleship journey, and at a private occasion and Jesus asked the disciple, he was testing them. So am I actually using Jesus style, you know, testing you? Who do the crowd say I am? And they reply, some say John the Baptist, others say Elijah, still others say one of the prophets a long ago has come back to life. Then Jesus say, yeah, these are all what other people say about me. But who do you say I am? Peter, on behalf of all the rest of the apostles, say the Christ of God, mean the Messiah of God. But Peter's concept of Messiah is quite different at that time. He can never imagine that the Messiah that Jesus talk about, the Christ, will die, will suffer. And then Jesus said, Jesus strictly want them not to tell to anyone because it's prematurely. They don't have a complete understanding of who the real Messiah, the the kind of Messiah is. So that's why Jesus told them not to go around telling people. Then then only Jesus tell them, the son of man must suffer many things. Suffer many things, this phrase keep occurring again and again. It's referred to the passion of Christ, meaning his torture, he's being whipped, he's being humiliated, spat on and all these things when you read in a in a passion story leading to the crucifixion, then rejected by elders and priests and teachers of the law must be killed and the third day be raised to life. And when Jesus said it, it had not yet happened, correct? It's a prediction. But Jesus himself knew, he knew about the prophecies in the in the in the in the scriptures. Okay, where is the second occurrence? I'm sure your Google come out more already. You you continue? Nine forty 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 four, forty four. Then then when you went on the confession of Peter, then transfiguration. You must read in the context and then it it mean more when you read, you you get the 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 passage. You can feel it more stronger. Transfiguration is when Jesus took the two inner disciple in a circle who Peter and and John. And then Jesus was transfigured, you know, he's shy, you know, and then Moses and Elijah, the two greatest prophet in the Old Testament, one is the law, one is the prophet, and authenticated him as a Messiah. And and Jesus is no only person, you know, he's all shy, like bright, you know, brightness. And you know, and and Peter and John knew something unusual, you know, about about Jesus. And then the voice, verse thirty four, and a cloud appeared and enveloped them. Whenever cloud came in the Old Testament, as well as New Testament, refer to the presence of God, you know? You know, God's presence. And and they were afraid as they entered the the cloud. Like your aeroplane, you fly through the cloud, you are very afraid, can't see anything. And a voice came from the cloud. This is not Captain Wong speaking. You know, the airplane went through the cloud. This is Captain Wong speaking. Don't be afraid. I'm still flying the plane, just trust me. No, the a voice came from the cloud saying, this is my son whom I have chosen, listen to him. You need to listen to him. And when the voice has spoken, they found that Jesus was alone. The disciple kept this to themselves and told no one at that time. And and then then it then Jesus healed the boy with an evil spirit. Then then Jesus say, listen carefully to what I'm about to tell you. Listen carefully to what I'm about to tell you. God spoke through the cloud, tell them, listen to him, listen to the Messiah. Now the Messiah is speaking, would you listen or not? What did the Messiah say? The son of man is going to be betrayed into the hands of men, but they did not understand what this meant. It was hidden from them so that they did not grasp it and they were afraid to ask him about it. Second time, Jesus again told them about his impending death, his betrayer and and event leading to his crucifixion. So second timer. Then when was the third time? Huh? Sorry? Luke eighteen. Okay, very good, thirty one, thirty four. Did you use the Google? Very good. Last time, did you ever use Google? You do, you're quite good, okay, Google. Okay, very good. Google is very quick, you can find information. So Jesus took the twelve aside and say, we are going up to Jerusalem. Everything that is written by the prophets. Now Jesus is telling them, you look at the old of the scriptures, refer to Old Testament, because New Testament wasn't wasn't written yet. And you say, everything that is written by the prophets about the son of man. But of course, when you read the Old Testament, the scripture, not every text is written about the Messiah, not every text. But of course, there are texts that does not refer to the Messiah, also has that what they call foreshadowing as a pattern, as a typology, pointing us to see that what is he say in the Old Testament is about the Messiah. Okay, but he say, everything that is written by the prophets about the son of man will be fulfilled. So my test as a Christian is then I go to the scripture and check, you know? There are thousands of prophecy, how many has already fulfilled about the Messiah? Maybe already eighty, ninety percent. So if eighty, ninety percent of all the prophecies have been fulfilled, the major thing concerning his crucifixion, resurrection, ascension, all has been fulfilled. You think would my faith be shaken by just sympathy in life? No. Why would sickness that can shackle you? Why would failures in life that can shackle you? Why would your friend betray you can shackle you? Why would anything that happen in your life will shake you? If you are firmly grounded to see what God has done, that God is absolutely trustworthy and reliable. So your salvation, how how can people say you can lose your salvation? Because God will ensure that you are saved. He already save you, he will save you till the end. So you need to persevere and walk with him. So don't let anything in life shake you. So here, Jesus say, he say, everything in the scripture will be fulfilled concerning everything that is written concerning the son of man, that is himself, he use the title son of man. He will be handed over to Gentile, they will mock him, insult him, spit on him, flock him and kill him. And on the third day, he will rise again. And then again, in verse thirty four, say the disciple did not understand any of his his meaning was hidden from there and they did not know what he was talking about. Obviously, God hide this from them. But they were also all the time thinking, ah, this Messiah is going to conquer the the Roman soldier. Do you know which among us, one will sit at his right hand, one will be at the left? They were all thinking about everything about themselves. They were all thinking about all this, where got time to really think of what Jesus is really saying? You know, and go to check the Old Testament. Where got the 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 Bible? They don't have the the Bible printed, where got? It's the what? You know, the the scroll, where to go and look at scroll? Ah, the the elder chief priest. And all these people in a synagogue kept by all these people. You think you 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 can go and open up and go and simply take? You have got a printed Bible, you don't even know to go and flip and study carefully. Those they cannot, you know, got to depend on what people say, can't even verify and check whether it's true or not. No Google somehow, how to go and check? So they they did not quite understand. Then of course, Jesus make all this prophecy according to the scripture, he know the scripture. Okay, so all these three places and and we want to see whether what Jesus say, what the scripture say, did it really fulfill what the scripture say? Okay, so number one, the son of man will be handed over to the Gentiles. The Gentile will mock him, insult him, flock him, kill him, crucify him. On the third day, he will be resurrected. Now my thing to you that you either check G P T, chat G P T or Google. Tell me where in the Old Testament that talk about you give me the Bible verses about him being insulted, being being flogged or even about his crucifixion, not one of his bone will be broken. He he will be crucified. Jack, tell me, I want to see your your referring to the. Okay, Isaiah fifty three, let's look at Isaiah fifty three. Okay, let's turn to Isaiah fifty three. Okay, what does Isaiah fifty three prophesize? Young, quickly? Huh? Okay, he's suffering. Okay, let's look at Isaiah fifty three. Okay, fifty two also, God. Okay, Isaiah fifty two is about the suffering servant. If you look at fourteen, just as there were many who were appalled at him, his appearance was so disfigured beyond that of any man and his form marked beyond human likeness. And he will sprinkle many nation and kings will shut their mouth because of him. For what they are not told, they will For what they are not told, they will see what they have not heard, they will understand. You wouldn't understand this until you, Jesus opened your mind to see, to understand the text, it seems to point to his crucifixion, he's so disfigured that his appearance, we were appalled when you, you, if you look at Mel Gibson picture, the movie about the, the Jesus being flogged and all this is completely disfigured now, he's all this, then you say, you ask me to believe that he's the Messiah. He's the one, come to save me, he can't even save himself. You look at the, the Isaiah, then when you read fifty three, then you begin to, to understand what Isaiah is saying, who has believed our message? To whom has the arm of the Lord been revealed? Then he went on, then in verse three, he say, he was despised, rejected my man, a man of sorrow familiar with suffering, like one from whom men hide their faces. He was despised when we estimate not, surely he took up our infirmities and carry our sorrow. So here is an interpretation of the crucifixion of Christ, of his humiliation. Why he came to do the suffering servant, why God sent him to do this? He was smitten, and yet we consider him stricken by God, smitten by him afflicted, but he was pierced for our transgression. The word pierced, where got in the time that seven hundred years before Jesus was pierced, and the word already come up? What is the probability of Isaiah can foresee that the suffering servant will be pierced? And then some for our transgression. He got no sin, but it's because of your sin he was pierced, he was crucified. He was crushed for our inequity, inequities, the punishment that brought us peace was upon him. By his wounds, we are healed. Of course, a lot of people take, take the, the word heal as a physical healing, but here the whole passage is about our sin. Our sin, our being seen alienated from God, our relationship with God is being, being, being affected and crushed. And so, the Messiah come to bring us back to God. And we all like sheep have gone astray. In that context, the wound is not a physical wound, it's not about physical disease. It's about spiritual, we are like sheep have gone astray, each of us has turned his own way, and the Lord has laid on him the iniquity of us all. It's a whole doctrine of atonement, our sin, I like. Able to hear all this, so, okay, then I, I wouldn't have time to read on because there's so much we, we, we can go into yet. You can see the, all the description, it was the Lord's will to crush him and cause him to suffer, verse ten. And though the Lord makes his life a guilt offering, he will see his offspring and prolong his day. And this has been taken the second half of verse ten about his resurrection. And after the suffering of his soul, he will see the light of life and be satisfied. And by his knowledge, my righteous servant will justify many. And of course, Romans chapter four, verse twenty five, interpret that, because he bear our iniquities, he justify us, he make us right with God. And Isaiah fifty three, okay, it's about crucifixion. Okay, what else, anyone? Okay, Psalm sixteen, verse ten, we, we can just only, only uh, pick up a few verses. But I want you to go home and spend maybe this one month carefully examine, you can either use a Google and use a chat G P T and then plow through all the verses to see the fulfillment, Jesus fulfilling the scripture. Uh, Psalm sixteen, verse ten. Okay, what is Psalm sixteen, verse ten? It's written by David. Verse ten say, because uh, you will not abandon me to the grave, nor will you let your holy one see decay. When you read Psalms without the Christological interpretation, Christological mean is about the study about Christ, focus on Christ. Without Christological understanding of the scripture Old Testament, you cannot see Christ. Then you read Old Testament, uh, like become, become, you know, oh, this verse now formula, you know, oh, it just apply to me that I, you know, made, oh, I had an accident, God, I didn't die, you know, oh, this was maybe I would not, he, God would not abandon me to the grave, you immediately apply to yourself already. But this particular verse is being interpreted by Peter to refer to Jesus, that David was actually prophesying about Jesus the Messiah of his resurrection. So how do I know? You turn to Acts, okay, turn to Acts, the, the sermon of Peter, chapter two. I believe that the Holy Spirit has guided the apostles to see more and more of the Christological understanding of the scripture, but it begins with Jesus first explain the scripture to the apostles and also to the disciples after his resurrection, that the scripture point to him and he fulfill the scripture. And so with that understanding, then they begin to think of all the Old Testament, their preaching is different already. Then if you look at Acts, chapter two, you look at Acts, chapter two, the sermon that Peter preached to the, to the crowd, and three thousand were saved. And then if you look at verse uh, twenty two, Acts, chapter two, twenty two, uh, uh, because they were thinking that these people were drunk, you know, the Holy Spirit, they didn't see that it's God fulfilling the prophecy in the last day when Jesus ascended, then Jesus poured out the Holy Spirit according to the Joel passage prophecy. Then, then Peter preached to them, say, men of Israel, listen to this, Jesus of Nazareth was a man accredited by God to you by miracles, wonders and signs, miracles, wonder and signs authenticate Jesus as the Messiah, that God affirm that this is the Messiah, his signs and wonders cannot be simply by performed by anybody. And the apostles are also given the gifts of wonders, signs and wonder to authenticate their message about the Messiah. Now, by so saying, I'm not saying that God cannot perform miracles anymore, God still perform miracles. But signs and wonder are specific terms used in that context. And, and Peter says, wonder and sign accredited by God, Jesus accredited by God, you think his crucifixion mean God rejected him? No, it's not, God rejected him. Which God did among you through him, as you yourself know, this man was handed over to you by God's set purpose and for knowledge. For knowledge mean God ready for ordained, God ready decree, God ready plan before even God created the world, God ready plan that Jesus is going to, to, to accomplish the work of salvation. And he's going to be the Messiah, he's going to be handed over uh, to the, to the, to the Pharisee, to the chief priest and, and to, to them. And, and by God's set purpose, and you with the help of wicked man, referring to the Jews, and the wicked man refer to the, to the all these uh, uh, elders and the chief priests and the Roman soldier and the Roman empire, put him to death by nailing him to the cross, but God raised him from the dead, freeing him from the agony of death because it was impossible for death to keep his hold on him. And he say that David said about him. So Peter began to read Psalms with a Christological lens, he began to see that, oh, this Psalm is about the resurrection of the Messiah, God already say that. He say, I saw the Lord always before me. David said, because he's at my right hand, I would not be shaken, therefore my heart is glad and my tongue rejoiced, my body also will live in hope. That is David speaking, because you will not abandon me to the grave, nor will you let your holy one see decay. You have made known to me the paths of life, you will fill me with joy in your presence. Then Peter began to interpret to say, brothers, I can tell you confidently that the patriarch David died and was buried, and the tomb is here to this day, he pointed in Jerusalem, Peter say, you can go and check. Peter's body is still buried and he's still dead. You know, I wish a movie do that, the bones is still there. But then he say that, but he was a prophet, and he knew that God had promised him, David is a prophet. He knew that God had promised him and oh, that he would place one of his descendants on his throne. And God already told him, one of the descendant would sit on his throne and reign forever and ever and rule forever and ever. Seeing what was ahead, he spoke of the resurrection of the Christ, and he was not abandoned to the grave, nor did his bodies see decay. God has raised this Jesus to life, and we are all witnesses of the fact. Exalted to the right hand of God, mean ascended, seated at right hand of God, he have received from the Father the promise Holy Spirit and pour out on you for now what you now hear and see, meaning that God already promised until Jesus was resurrected, until he was ascended, exalted. Then Jesus will begin his ministry of pouring out the Holy Spirit. And the pouring out of the Holy Spirit, for the first time, people receive the Holy Spirit and regenerated and get converted. For the first time, in, in that context, that God fulfill the promise. So Jesus is the baptizer, he still baptize people with the Holy Spirit, to give you the Holy Spirit in you, to, to convert you, to live in you, to guide you, to empower you. So here is a fulfillment of the promise, but what I want to say is this. They read the Old Testament now with a Christological lens, meaning that they see Jesus is being prophesized in the Old Testament, and you need to learn how to read that. Then you begin to say, wow, God has planned so much for me, for you. And then you say, wow, it's all about Christ, it's all about Christ. He's the center, the theme of the Old Testament, that's why the, the theologians say, Christ, Jesus is concealed in the Old Testament, he is revealed in the New Testament. I tell you, young people, if you really read your scripture, I can tell you, you obey, you read, and you are the student of God's word, you'll be a very different man. I can tell you, you grow up to be a very different man. You will get excited, more excited than anything else in the, in the things that you, you, you now have. Okay, so, so the crucifixion, uh, we wouldn't have time to go into many passages, you can. Okay, one last verse quickly is Psalm one one, oh, verse one. Psalm one one, oh, verse one. See, can you read Psalm one one, oh, verse one? Right hand, until I make your enemies my foodstool. The Lord says to my lord, sit at my right hand until I make your enemies a foodstool for your feet, is refer to the exaltation of Christ. If it is to be the exaltation of Christ, then it has to also come with resurrection. If Jesus died already, not resurrected, how can he be exalted? So Psalms also point to Jesus crucifixion, uh, 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 resurrection and exaltation. So you read, these are just a few verses only, there are plenty. If you keep asking chat G P T, give me more, give me more, give me more, and they keep coming up verses. Beginning, chat G P T testing you also, give you three verses only, and then know that you got no patience, and then you close your chat G P T. Say, give me more verses that Old Testament point to Jesus as the Christ, his crucifixion and resurrection. Then give you, like, give me more, give me more, they keep giving you all the verses, then you can read, read in the context to see whether it's true or not, okay? So this is one way of studying, Jesus betrayer is in Psalms forty one, verse five and nine, we won't go into that. Jesus crucifixion is Psalm twenty two, verses sixteen to nineteen, eighteen. Psalms, okay, I, I think this one is very interesting, Psalms twenty eight. Go to Psalms twenty eight, because Jesus say that he'll be rejected, he'll be betrayed, he will be crucified, all this according to scripture, see where scripture say or not. Uh, Psalms twenty two. Verse sixteen. Uh, maybe I should go into uh, uh, fourteen, uh, uh, verse twelve, verse twelve, twenty two, verse twelve. Many bulls surround me, of course, this is written by, by, first of all, by David, when he was being surrounded by, by Saul and enemies. So the immediate context is about his situation. You cannot try to prevent, try to read the Psalms and bypass the authoria, historical context, the author intention. Initially is written about David's experience, that is true, but the divine author point is to, to the Messiah. Now the bulls surround me, strong bulls of Bashan encircle me, the people who watch his crucifixion and, and then, and what do you say, roaring lions staring their prey, open their mouth wide against me. So who at the crucifixion say, if you are the Christ, come down, you know, you save other, cannot save yourself. They were laughing at him and, you know, if you are the king of Israel, you know, and come down, all kind of thing, they were actually making fun of him. And he said, my heart has turned to wax, it has melted away within me, my strength is dried out like a pot shed, and my tongue stick to the roof of my mouth, you lay me in the dust of death. Dogs have surrounded me, not literal dogs, a band of evil men encircle me, they have pierced my hand and my feet. Wow, this one, very direct, you know, they pierced my hands and my feet. I can count all my bones, people stare and gloat over me, they divide my garments among them and cast lots for my clothing. Matthew Gospel quoted this, verse eighteen, the soldier were casting lot, and, and Matthew sees this as a fulfillment of scripture. Do you think they describe the crucifixion scene of Jesus? Unless you have the Christological lens, you won't be able to see this, you won't be able to see this. But of course, when you interpret Psalms, you got to interpret in his immediate context, verse is about David himself experienced this, but his experience may be a type of what the Messiah is going to go through. Is God pointing to the Messiah? So scripture, when Jesus say he fulfills scripture literally, there are thousands of passages in the Old Testament that can, is actually concerning Christ, his suffering, his crucifixion and his resurrection. My own question, at least my personal, I don't know about you, I say, why does God took so much pain from Genesis all the way? Thousands of years, how many thousands of years are leading to the coming of Christ? And then in the Old Testament, in history, he worked that out, and then prophesized by the prophets in the writing, Moses and all the event, all these, what is the probability of these thing happening that Jesus, the Messiah will fulfill, all that the scripture say, that's the first question I ask, what is the probability? Because I'm an engineer, I was an engineer, I was interested in mathematics, and the probability when you see this is astounding. God planned it very meticulously and carefully. When God does this, you think I would still doubt him? Why should I still doubt him? So when we doubt is our sin, we find excuse not to believe in him, so that I can still live my life, I still can live my life independent of God, I don't want him to be my God. I don't want him to hold me accountable, so I can do what I like in life. But when I really honest and say, wow, God has planned this, he loved me and he really wanted me to know to be certain, then I must learn to live my life in submission to him. So this is, this is, is really remarkable, and Christ's crucifixion, we read Isaiah fifty three, verses four to seven, eighty. And Christ's resurrection also in Psalm, in many other passages, you know, the pattern may not be, uh, he will rise on the third day, you can not find in the Old Testament to Uh he will rise on the third day. You can not find in the Old Testament to say, oh, the Messiah will rise on the third day. No lah, you may not find that. But the pattern of the third day, the three days ah, it's plenty, Jonah, three days, three nights. And, and many other passages talk about the third day, something happened. It's a pattern of the resurrection of Christ. Okay, now we come to the second part. If you don't mind, I take another ten, fifteen minutes ah. Or maybe continue the, the next week, the next month I come. Uh because there's so much I don't want to just go through. I want you to be very certain. Now, listen carefully to what I say now. I say, Jesus really died and was buried. He really died and was buried. How are you going to convince people that Jesus really died and buried? You look at the story and people say, oh, this is only your Bible, of course ah, you, you, you tell me that Alexander the Great is also history one. You tell me Napoleon Park is also history one. You say Malaysia uh got independent in nineteen fifty-seven. How can I believe that this is really happening? Can be this be repeated or not, using science to prove that independence, Malaysia got independent nineteen fifty-seven? Can not lah, how can science prove that? But historical apparatus can prove it using historical investigation. Historical method can show the validity or the invalidity of the statement that you made. You made a statement and Malaysia got independent in nineteen fifty-seven. So how do you prove? You prove to me that Tengku Aturaman was there and the, the, all the Malaysian history book and many other books elsewhere. That show authenticate that this really happened in nineteen fifty-seven. Historical method lah, it's not something that is imagination or fiction. So how do you know well, a crucifixion already happened? Using historical method, eyewitnesses ah. Even lawyer, uh, where's Peter? Peter, you've been to court, isn't it? You go to court now. What would the judge determine whether your statement is true or not? When you make certain statement, um eyewitnesses ah. Oh, then of course eyewitnesses, the, the, um, your opponent lawyer will try to discredit your eyewitnesses. By what? Showing that this guy cannot be trusted lah. By, that's why the lawyer will, will discredit his character. But then, what the person say? Then the lawyer can say, there are three other witnesses. That's why, you know, when the. The people who went back to the apostles to say that we have seen Jesus. He, we recognized when he broke bread. How many? Two ah. Jewish contact Judaism, you need to have two witnesses. If Chen Yang say, maybe not true ah. But the wife also say exactly, oh, at a different angle. And yeah, these are historical witness, they are the witnesses. So crucifixion, you tell me, who are the witnesses? Quickly, uh without even refrain, who are the eyewitnesses? John, John, the only disciple, but there are big crowd who went, you know, uh, uh, who else? His mother, Mary Magdalene, who else? You can also interview the soldier if you hand ah, the soldier that pierced. And the soldier say, I'm the one that pierced his side. I saw the water and the blood. And who else? Their elders and chief priests saw, saw his death lah. They know he died. He really died. Pilot also can authenticate. There are many eyewitnesses. That can witness, can say that Jesus really died. If you read the, the crucifixion account ah, John Gospel and the Luke Gospel. You will come away to know that Jesus really died. Even the centurion ah who witnessed the whole thing say, surely this was a righteous man. And, and, and all the people who had gathered to witness this saw what took place. And they beat their breasts and went away and they, all those who knew him, including the women who had followed him from Galilee, stood at a distance, watching this thing. Okay, these are eyewitnesses, uh saw the actual event of crucifixion took place. And then who went to take his body? Ask from pilot, Joseph Arimatia. Joseph Arimatia is, he did not agree to his crucifixion. He was in a council, Sanhedrin council. And then you got Nicodemus, the secret believer. Jesus went to him in John chapter three, then suddenly now appear when he uh to bury Jesus, he went along with Joseph Arimatia. And he was the one who prepared seventy-five pounds of spice. And that was for embalming. Those who got formaldehyde or not? Ah, like you go to Nirvana, someone died, go inject the, the formaldehyde to preserve the what? The body lah, for three days. And the Jewish custom, they, 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 they put Jesus' whole body ah with spices, prevent decay and the stench, you know? And then they use linen to wrap around him, you know? So who took, who took the body? Pilot, you think he would simply give the body to uh Joseph Arimatia? He knew that dead already ah, no point, what is that? Take lah, take lah, this, Jesus died already. If Jesus is not dead, you think he, he wouldn't ah? Okay, Jesus really died already. So Joseph took Jesus. If you go and watch the painting ah, a lot of paintings, uh, 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 great artists ah. Show the picture of Jesus' body ah, those who have, people who die, your loved ones ah. And you can see after a few hours ah, the blood is draining off already, meaning that turn color already, darker color already. You, you can tell one, the body is dead already, no, you know? So then people say, then why then the women still want to take the spice the next morning? Why did they, next morning she go already embalming or why is she take the spice? That's why I say observation is very important. You read the John Gospel very carefully. They went there to anoint Jesus, anointing. Anoint Jesus is like putting perfume, you know, so that the smell will not be so strong. It's decaying, even if you put embalming in case there's so smell, then they are not go there to go and unwrap the linen and put a spice on top of the seventy-five pounds. No, they went there to anoint him. He really died already. The women knew he died. There are so many witnesses that Jesus really died. So if the Muslim come to you and say the Quran say that Jesus didn't die. Then you ask him to read the, our, our gospel lah. They say Jesus didn't die. If Jesus really didn't die, then, then your salvation is normal already. Jesus didn't die for your sin. Now you know how serious the statement, Jesus didn't die. You know why? How Satan can attack Christianity? Only few thing only. Jesus did not die. Jesus is not the son of God. Me, he's like ordinary man, and then he didn't, he wasn't resurrected. The whole Christianity, a few thing gone already, you, you don't have to believe. So crucifixion is really happen. It's not a hearsay. Now, you must wrestle with this, that Jesus really died and buried. Because if you don't wrestle with this, you cannot come to the resurrection. Because there are a lot of conspiracy theory. They say Jesus didn't really die. He walked out of the tomb. Or the, the disciples stole his body. How would you answer? People say Jesus didn't die. He walked out of the tomb. He unwrapped himself, then he walk out. You tell me? Then I can tell. How would you answer? You tell your friend ah, you do know what is crucifixion? You do know what is crucifixion? Go and read, what is crucifixion? If any man have gone through what Jesus went through, ah, Jesus is such a strong young man. He went through that ah, he really was dead. Pierced, nailed, on the cross, all the blood drained off. And water, the serum and the blood came out, show that he really died. You think the third day ah, after three days ah, he can still walk out ah? You think can ah? If you had a minor accident ah, your bicycle cycling and then a motorbike bang on you, lying on the bed with a leg like that wrapped round ah. Next day, one man cannot even walk ah. You can, you can take out your cars and then start walk ah, walk out of the grave. It's like people make statement without thinking. So you challenge them. Say, you go and, go and read the, the other account of the crucifixion. You must be very convinced that Jesus really died. Without this conviction, then resurrection doesn't make sense to you because people bluff you. Okay, Jesus, we established Jesus really died. Because it's important, because the scripture say, Paul say, the Messiah will die according to the scripture. Then you go to scripture. If Jesus didn't die, then God is a bluff lah. He bluffers, whoa. All the Old Testament, all these are bluffer. Ah, he bluffers. Jesus really died and he died for our sins. There is a theological interpretation of the significance of his death. And then only you come to be convinced of the resurrection of Jesus. And firstly, by looking at all the patterns in the Old Testament and the verses talk about the resurrection, the prophecy about the resurrection of Jesus. Jesus himself say that on the third day he will rise. Then you examine the scripture, the gospel writer. Is it true that Jesus really raised on the third day? Okay, I think I want to end it here. I know you're hungry. The question I ask you are, how long after Jesus ascended? The apostles in Jerusalem began to preach the, the resurrection of Jesus. And everywhere they go and tell say, Jesus has risen. They preach the gospel already. How, how long? Huh? Immediately, forty days Jesus taught them in Galilee, not in Jerusalem. Uh, Jesus ascended to meet him in Jerusalem. Jesus taught them about the kingdom of God and many other things, forty days. He appear, he disappear, he appear, he disappear. And then he ascended, they saw him ascended to heaven. Then immediately they preached the, the, the resurrection of Jesus. They were willing to go to jail. They were willing to die. And then people say, they make the statement. If Jesus did not rise from the dead, do you think that they will be willing to die for a lie? If other disciples stole the body of Jesus and buried Jesus somewhere, do you think you, if you were the, the, the apostle disciple? Would you be willing to die for a lie? There are people willing to die for what they believe. Muslim also ah, I believe I will go to paradise and send the two virgins. I don't mind. Good deal. I, I would die for that. They strongly believe in that, whether it's true or not. But of course, they, they don't believe it's a lie. If it is a lie, I don't think they want to die for that already. But because they believe it's a truth, that's why they are willing to die. But the disciples was preaching the message of the resurrection of Christ. You know, if Jesus did not resurrect, there are two things. One, Roman Empire pilots ah, or even the tripe and Pharisees ah. Just throw the body of Christ on the street or the skeleton and say, this is your Messiah, where God resurrection. None of them. Nothing happened of this sort. Nothing. That's why you have atheists who check the internal evidence of the Bible to prove that resurrection did not take place. They went away, strongly believe that resurrection take place. When I prepare this sermon now, I went through the, the gospel carefully again and again and read. Of course, I read long time ago. I read, but I want to make sure to read very carefully. I came away even stronger in my conviction. That's why you can see I preach the way I talk to you. I'm very convinced of the resurrection of Jesus. So you need to go and read carefully and examine, like you, you must. But if you're not interested, then no way lah. Your faith will be lukewarm, your faith will be nothing one, nothing to talk about. Because you, you're not bother, you don't bother. But because this does affect you, so you need to really study carefully. The resurrection of Jesus, indeed it take place. No one saw the resurrection of Jesus on the grave. No one saw him. You know, God resurrected him, then he walked out of the tomb. Nobody saw this. But the moment he was resurrected now, his body no longer confined to the physical limitation anymore. That's why he can appear, disappear. He can appear, disappear, and his appearance also different already. But he's still the Jesus. Because the, the scama, when we go to, when Jesus come again, we will see his pierce mark. They will look upon him whom they appears. We will see his this mark will forever remind us that because of us, he died on the cross. So how are we convinced? Historical evidence, the witnesses, there are so many witnesses. And Paul in the letter of Corinthians, he to say, there are five hundred people that Jesus appeared. They are still living today, although some have already died. So when Paul wrote this ah, people would have interview all these people. You know, they, this is less than probably hundred. You are one of them. Did you see Jesus appeared to you? Yeah, in your way? No lah, you, you think you're the, you are the disciple lah? Yeah, you were somewhere and you, you were, you're eating your fish ah, your pork ah, he appeared to you. Resurrection, the post resurrection appearances of Jesus are real. There are so many witnesses. If you have one or two ah, or the eleven apostles, Pakat nah, you know, conspired, but there are many more. Yeah, the witness ascension, ascension is important, otherwise only resuscitation ma. If Jesus resuscitated later, he died and then buried elsewhere ma. That's why ascension is very important. Okay, I think uh, I originally wanted to look at the Luke. Chapter twenty-four thirteen and to the end ah, and uh. Break you into groups to ask the observation question. What did you observe? And then the interpretation, how do you interpret what you have observed? Then what it means to you? I wish we have more time to talk about application. I need to share you, what does it mean to you? Yeah, more work. What does it mean to you? What does it mean to you, this passage? What does it mean to you? It doesn't mean anything, then you're wasting your time. You're wasting your life away. What does it mean to you? Go back and think through. The resurrected Lord, what does it mean in your life? He's still alive. He knows your problem. Our problem is never solved immediately, you know? Ah, those who gone through suffering, you pray, pray after war, thing get worse and after three months still like that. Some have to go through years and then you find that, wow, through it all, your life deepen already. You get to know God more. Your life has changed already, different. God has his different time to take you through your problem. But he's alive, you know? And you experience the living Christ in your life. Okay, I think we should go for lunch and let me close in prayer. Lord, thank you for being here with us. Even as we examine the passages in the scripture. We are convinced of your crucifixion and your resurrection and your ascension. You are the living Christ and you are still with us. Because you already said to the apostles, to the disciples. When you commission them that you will be with us forever, until the day you will come. And all authority on earth and in heaven has been given to you. And that you delegated the authority to us to preach the gospel. To preach the message of repentance and forgiveness of sin. And to make disciples of all nation, that everything will be reconciled. Lord, in your way, in your time, in your thing. Yet we know that not everyone will submit under your authority. Yet you have ordained the means whereby people can be reconciled to God Almighty by preaching the gospel. And the gospel is the means of grace. So help us to be faithful. And as we go for our lunch, bless our fellowship and build this church. The young people, the old, the young and old, all will be strengthened in their faith. And that we will really uh come to know Christ in a much deeper way. This we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.